Good evening. You desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. And speakers will be called upon at the correct time. At this time I will convene the City Council meeting of City of Grand Terrace for February 28th, 2017. And we did have a scheduled person for invocation, and I don't see him here. Oh, alright. You're from the Living Word Church?
Yes.
Okay, and I know your name isn't the one that's on my agenda here, so if you would come forward, please, and let us know what your name is.
My name is Alonso Garcia.
Alonso Garcia. Thank you, Alonso Garcia, who will give us our invocation and immediately following that, I will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we pray that the Father tonight, that he forgive us wisdom, that there be unity, that we will be one today as we speak about everything with this great city, and we just lift up everybody to you, from the mayor all the way down to the Jewish court, a blessing on their mind that it would have clarity as we think and wisdom as we decide, and we just thank you for being good at everything you do, and we just pray your blessing on this great city, and we just continue to seek you for everything we do, and we just thank you and bless today's meeting in Jesus' name.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam in the room, City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Reinars?
Present.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles?
Present.
Mayor McNaboe?
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, and our consent calendar generally has multiple items on it that will be voted on at one time, but right now, the only item we have on there is to waive full reading of the ordinances on the agenda, and I will entertain a motion for that one item.
May I like to make a motion, waive the full reading of the ordinance and agenda? Second.
Alright, please vote. Ah, not working. Alright, try again, please. Thank you.
The votes passes. Mayor, Councilmember Steve Reinars and Wilson vote yes. Mayor Protem votes yes, and Mayor McNaboe votes no.
Thank you. Go to public comment, and this is an opportunity for the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council will not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or questions asked, and items may also be agendized for a later meeting depending on the item raised. So I have two requests to speak during this time. The first one is from Suzanne Santoya. Would you please come forward and speak with us?
My name is Suzanne Santoya, and I'm here this evening seeking permission to put a block wall that runs on the side of my house to the front. I hired a contractor. He came to the city to get permits, and... He was told that I couldn't run the wall all the way down because the city at some point had voted to take all the residents in Grand Terrace part of their front, so many feet. So I was given a printout, he came back with a printout, and it shows that the city owns part of my front yard and my planter, and I can't run the wall all the way down. I called Mr. Duffy way back before January, and I didn't receive a call for a long time. When I finally made contact with him, it was in January. He told me to give him two months to look into the matter, and he would call me back. I called him yesterday, and he told me that he thought he had called me, and that I was able, there was no reason why I couldn't put the wall up to the line that the city says I could go up to. I'm trying to run the block wall down the front of my house, and the column will sit on my lawn, but will be right up against the sidewalk. I was told that the city took all of our property, so many feet back on every home, although as a homeowner, we never received notice that this was going to happen. I was quite surprised to learn that I now don't even own my big planter in the front of the house. When you stand in front of my house, and I have a nice big planter, my wall's not going to run all the way down, it's going to be back this way. I was told this was because if the city needed our property, they would be able to widen sidewalks, widen the street, any construction they needed. I have lived in this home for about thirty-seven years. If you pass my house, you're on a cul-de-sac. Next door to me, there's an empty lot. It's the water reservoir. I do have part of the slope, but that property is only owned by me to keep it clean. I can't drive a car on it, I can't put a fence. The only thing I could do is keep the weeds out, keep it clean, and I have for all of these years. The neighbor on the other side of the lot has the majority of the lot, he keeps it clean. I am here because I feel as a homeowner, we should've all had some say as to, you're coming to take part of my lawn, I can't run a block wall, I talked to Mr. Duffy, I said, I look around Grand Terrace, there's thousands and thousands of houses that have block walls that run up to the sidewalk, some are low walls in the front, and I was told that all of these people have done it illegally. And I certainly know that people will do things illegally, but I doubt it if that many residents took it upon themselves to do this illegally. I invite anybody here to visit my home, because right now, with the area where I want to put the wall, I have a hedge. Over the summer, we were asked to cut down. We're in a drought, we need to watch the watering, so that's exactly what I did, and I lost many of the bushes in between, they're dead. So we decided maybe what we need to do is take out the hedge and put a block wall. It will not only look uniform when you stand in front of my home, but also that lot next door kicks up a lot of dirt. I get the noise behind me, which is Barton Road, and this block wall will not only improve my home, but it will keep the dirt out, and it's a sound barrier. And I'm asking for permission to be able to run that wall down, and I understand that busy streets like Mount Vernon, Michigan, they will probably be a lot more construction going on. If I lived on that street, I could see, but on the street that I live on, I doubt it very much. I've been in that home for thirty-seven years, I doubt it if there will be any kind of improvement. You certainly can't widen the sidewalks, they're pretty wide, you can't widen the street, and I doubt it if anything's going to happen next door in the lot, and that wall will not be sitting anywhere on that lot, it will be sitting on my property. And the column, I would like the column, I don't want you to stand in front of my home and see a block wall, and it's half over here, and yet my nice planter stands here. I would like them to be uniform and lined up, and that's why I'm here today, and I would like you to revisit this, all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Santoya. We're not able to take a position on that tonight.
Right.
But I did have a discussion with City Manager about this matter, and he has an idea, so he would like to follow up with you on this.
Sure, no problem.
And where he's going to go with this.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you for coming. Appreciate your concerns.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barney Barnett.
Good evening. My name is Barney Barnett, I'm in the High Grove Happenings newspaper, I live right on the southern part of your boundary. I'm also the chairman of the High Grove Municipal Advisory Council, and I'm just here to remind some of you that do not know who I am and so on, that we're still working on acquiring a MetroLink stop in High Grove that would benefit both counties. Because this location is so close to the San Bernardino Riverside County line, it will also benefit everybody on both sides, Grand Terrace, Colton, so on. We have written letters of support from Grand Terrace, Loma Linda, Colton, support from senators from both sides of the county line, our congressman supports this location. And I brought with me tonight one of the 2001 resolutions that was passed by the Grand Terrace City Council, and that's a long time ago in regard to this location. So we just want to remind you and thank you for your support. This was dated, the resolution that Grand Terrace made supporting the High Grove location for a MetroLink stop was dated December 13th of 2001, so you can tell how long we've been working on this. We hopefully are making little progress after fifteen years, but I just want to remind you, I'm still here, we're still trying to get it that would benefit both regions on both sides of the county line. So if you can, we submitted, we have this article in our February issue of the High Grove Happenings, it can be seen at highgrovehappenings.net online. Please, if you haven't read it, read it over and see how this would benefit both locations, and we've only had one opposition to this location, and that's from the Riverside County Transportation Commission. We've asked for support from Sandbag, however, it's under the jurisdiction of RCTC, so we're still here. Anybody that would like to talk about it more, I'm always available. Give me a call, and if you could leave this on the counter or something, so people could read it or look at it on our website. And I thank you for your continued support, because I know when this was approved and supported in 2001, even eight years later, reaffirmed that. So it's still in the works, we haven't given up yet, and we've got another plan in how to keep this going that would benefit both sides. So if you'll refer your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. And if you'll hand that to Ms. Fortune there? Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during this time on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no takers, I'll close public comment and come back to council for their communications, starting with Councilmember Reinars.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and taking their time away from their homes and their families to come and monitor how government works. I did attend a couple of functions this week, this past week, and the first one I attended was so far the favorite function that I have attended since I've been on the City Council. It was at the Senior Center, and it was a banquet to honor eighty- and ninety-year-olds in Grand Terrace. And I was at a table seated with a seventeen-year-old high school student, two or three other people, and then a one-hundred-and-two-year-old resident. So the conversations were pretty amazing, and it was a function that I really enjoyed, and I think Mayor McNaboe did as well. And I also, then back to reality, I went to the Colton Joint Unified School District Long Range Facilities Master Plan Committee meeting, and what they're doing is trying to figure out what they want education to look like in Colton in the next five, ten, twenty years. They're just setting up a master plan, and they've hired a consultant group to figure out what's important, what's important to teachers, to students, to community members, and to board members. And we did come up with a draft of guiding principles, and then what they did is they went out to do site observations. They actually went to all of the schools and spoke to all of the principals, and some of the things that they came up with from the principals that were important throughout the school district, number one was administration and staff support, number two was improving multipurpose space, number three was safety and security, number four was trying to implement 21st century classrooms so the district can keep up with other districts around the state and the nation, number five was outdoor learning space, number six was hard courts, gymnasiums, and unsafe playing fields, number seven was systems upgrade, which are things like sewer and water and stuff like that, number eight was library and media rooms. Schools with new construction, number eleven was updating restrooms, and number twelve was updating gymnasiums. But the top priority throughout the Grand Terrace schools, and I've seen this, is parking and drop-off and pickup. That was at the elementary schools, the middle school, and Grand Terrace High School. So it was good for me to hear that that's on everybody's radar, the principal, the superintendent, and the consultants, because that is a mess, so that is going to get worked on. What I also attended last week was more meetings with our Neighborhood Watch Group, and Anthony's here, and Johan, and they will be doing a briefing later on when we get to the public safety portion of this meeting tonight, but other than that, I didn't do anything else or attend anything else council-related this week.
Thank you, Councilmember Reinars. Councilmember Hussey?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Just a couple of short things. I want to thank the Girl Scouts for everything they're doing for the veterans. I had a, one of the little troop Girl Scouts gave me a bear, I guess for all the cookies I ate. If you eat like a hundred boxes, you get a free bear, so I'm probably going to work on my second bear coming up. But they gave me a couple of thank you cards, which is really sweet, and they're really taking care of the veterans. One of the quotes is, they're giving the veterans cookies because they deserve cookies for protecting our country, so, you know, veterans are working for cookies, which is a good thing. But I'm really proud of the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts here in Grand Terrace, you know, I know the Boy Scouts help out a lot, you know, over there, I'm sure they're going to be out there during the Blue Mountain hike, they always see them out there doing that, and they always help with the community, but what a good group of young men and women, little boys and girls helping out, and the parents out there helping, and the community leaders with them, and showing them, you know, what it is to like to volunteer, and what it is like to, you know, serve their community, and I assume some will be serving their country. I got a thing, well, Brian has a very good report, the maintenance thing, one of the things about when they built the new school, one of the problems is that people don't take in effect is maintaining the school, like the high school, they had the budget on that, so, and then one thing that really troubled me, and me and Brian were talking about, one of the schools, it wasn't in our city, but one of the schools was requesting the fire alarm system be done, that's pretty much a life safety code, so we got with the principal about that, to ask him what's going on, and the superintendent. But one thing's coming up, and I'm going to be doing it tomorrow, plus we have another community cabinet meeting, is Read Across America for the elementary schools, and I'm asking for volunteers. Tomorrow, they're having it at a Cooley Ranch Elementary School, they need volunteers in Alice Burdy, and on the second, they need it over here at Grand Terrace Elementary, now our communities, and it starts at nine-thirty to ten-thirty, so if you guys got a couple minutes and you want to brighten the kids' day, you know, you go in there and you read Cat in the Hat, they have books for you, you'll be escorted, you know, in the classroom, you know, from first grade to sixth grade, and the kids are really attentive on that, and they really like, you know, when parents come in and read, and community leaders, and I think the mayor's going to go read on the second, but, you know, they just really enjoy it. So if you guys have time and like to do it, they're looking for volunteers, they need more readers. And I look forward to seeing everybody on the Blue Mountain hike this Sunday, and thank you, everybody, once again for coming out. God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Your participation in government is what keeps us free, and I would like to defer my comments to my associates, I have nothing for this evening.
Alright. Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem Robles?
I also have nothing to report. I spent the time in between going to Portland and meeting my first great-grandson. I will be reading at Grand Terrace Elementary on Thursday.
Alright, thank you. And I did enjoy the gold and silver event at the Senior Center. It was very nicely done, and it's wonderful to celebrate life in that way, and I will be reading at Grand Terrace Elementary as well as Terrace View on Thursday. Other than that, I have no other reports, so we will move on to our agenda. We have no public hearings, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. First item is professional services agreement with K2, K T U A to prepare the Grand Terrace Active Transportation Plan. May we have a staff report, please? One more time? Director Mullin?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Sandra Mullin, I'm the Planning and Development Services Director. This item this evening supports Goal Two and Four of our 2030 Vision Plan. This item recommends several actions, including approval of contract with K T U A for the preparation of the city's first active transportation plan. Just to give the council a little bit of background, and for the public that's in attendance this evening, in 2015, the city conducted a number of public workshops to solicit interest and support of possible projects related to the Caltrans Active Transportation Program. That process narrowed projects down to two. One was a non-infrastructure active transportation plan to promote mobility and connectivity throughout the city, and the second project was an infrastructure safe routes to school project. Upon council direction, a grant application was submitted for the active transportation plan, and the city was awarded a grant in the amount of $295,000. Staff prepare an RFP, and the top proposer is K T U A. The project manager is Joe Punzalan, and he is here this evening and will provide the council a brief presentation on their proposal. A copy of the presentation has been provided at the dais. With that, I'll go ahead and introduce Mr. Punzalan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Hi, good evening. My name is Joe Punzalan, I am with K2 plus A. I'm the senior associate there, I've been with the company about nineteen years, and I've actually completed about, close to about twenty active transportation plans throughout Southern California. So just a little bit of background of myself and my company, we are a planning and landscape architecture firm specializing in these types of planning projects. Within our team, we have Catherine Peady and associates, they'll be leading a lot of our outreach efforts, Safe Routes to School efforts, we will be doing walk audits and bike tours throughout the city as the project moves forward. We also have an engineering team, L L G, Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan, they'll be overseeing the pilot projects that we'll be developing as part of this study. So what I'm going to be doing is kind of presenting what we did in our shortlist interview. A quick snapshot of the city is looking at the connectivity between the other cities and to recreation such as the Blue Mountain Trails, U C R, City of Riverside, Colton, and retail just outside the city, identifying and understanding that most of the residents in Grand Terrace commute by vehicle, you know, to their, to work, play, and those types of destinations. The focus of this plan is to also look at those connections, but looking at active transportation connections such as bicycling and walking to get to those destinations, but more importantly, making those connections within the city of Grand Terrace, improving safe routes to school, improving access to transit, improving access to trails, recreation, retail, so that, looking at alternative modes of transportation throughout the city of Grand Terrace. I'm going to be, this might be a little technical, but we're going to go through some of the analysis that we intend on doing on this project. Well, one of the first things we'll be doing is a bicycle pedestrian propensity model. It's looking at various data that's out there, demographics, collision data, attractors such as destinations, and generators, where are the people living, where are the schools at, and really looking at where this density of attractions and mobility, propensity for mobility will be throughout the city of Grand Terrace. These are just a couple of examples that we've done in Huntington Beach, and in National City, and down in San Diego. This is actually a really good tool to kind of highlight where the needs are within the city of Grand Terrace. One of the other things we'll be doing also is a pedestrian level of comfort, looking at the sidewalk network within the city, looking at the crosswalks, looking at some of the intersections, to really look at what's comfortable for folks to get in and around Grand Terrace by walking, primarily around schools and retail and parks. Here's an example of what that entails. This has actually been Viren Street, I was here a couple weeks ago doing some fieldwork, and you'll see parts of the street is actually a high comfort where you have a sidewalk, a paved sidewalk, parkway strip, on-street parking, so you have that buffer for pedestrians adjacent to moving vehicle traffic, then just across on the other side of the street, no sidewalks, no amenities for the pedestrians. So we'll be looking at those types of infrastructure needs throughout the city as part of this plan, as well as, and that is also going to be wrapped into the Safe Routes to School plan, looking at some of the infrastructure needs in and around the schools. That will also entail some walk audits, walking tours and biking tours. As part of the pedestrian, as part of the analysis, we'll also be looking at stress levels, what they call level of traffic stress, or L T S, which is kind of a national study, a national analysis that most of the cities are starting to utilize for prioritization, and looking at the street network as far as connectivity within the city, we'll be doing that for the city as well. What's important for us is when we're creating projects, especially for the bicycle and pedestrian project, is looking at the widths of the street. We want to work within the current right-of-way and not have to do any kind of expansion or anything like that. We want to just work with what's currently there, and the table on your right kind of shows what we'll, the level of analysis we'll be doing for these bicycle pedestrian projects throughout the city, and not, we're not going to do what you see on the left-hand side, which is just, we're just going to put some bike lanes down. We want to see what's actually feasible within the city. Here's an example of Main Street, High Grove on the left, Grand Terrace on the right, there's already a bike lane on Grand Terrace, but looking at the various widths within each of the streets as we develop our projects, is looking at what are those opportunities where we can provide additional bike lanes, even protected bike lanes, which are becoming more and more, not necessarily popular, but more and more, what's the word, more and more, in demand, in demand. It's, you're seeing a lot of these pop up in San Diego and LA, protected bike lanes where there's a barrier between the bike lanes and moving vehicles. So those are, these are just ideas that we want to work with the community on identifying what they would like to see within their city as far as improving bicycle pedestrian connectivity throughout the city. But one other thing that we like to look at is looking at possible off-street trails, connecting off-street trail network to Blue Mountain, and just really throughout the city, but not just looking at these trails as a transportation mode, but looking at it as a destination. Many trails throughout Southern, throughout the United States are a destination for many residents where they can, they can play with their kids, they can teach their kids how to ride their bike, as a matter of fact, that's how I taught my son how to ride, was on a trail, but it's a place where every, residents of Grand Terrace can recreate as well as use it as transportation. The other things we're going to be looking at as far as when the draft plan is, is looking at some of the performance measures, how well these facilities work, what are the increases in biking and walking, what are the, hopefully the decreases in collision rates, but really getting more and more active participation without, throughout the city. Our engineers are also going to be looking at two priority projects. We're going to be designing two, basically, once we come up with... We're going to be designing two, basically, once we come up with a list of projects, we're going to select and prioritize those two, and then we'll do a preliminary design, work with the residents, work with the city staff on what improvements those can make. What's important about this analysis and this design is it can be grant-ready. So we'll have some drawings, some cost estimates, and some texts that can go right into Caltrans grant applications, SCAG grant applications, those types of funding where you can get additional funds to get projects built. An important part of this project is actually the public outreach. Scope calls for three public outreach events. We work with the city on what type of events works best, whether we can do a pop-up event, or we can be at a breakfast, or at like some sort of city event where we'll have a booth, and we can gather input that way. We can do standalone workshops. Those are things that we're going to flesh out as we work through the scope of work and the project. One of the things that we also wanted to do, and we actually, you see the photo on the bottom right, is we actually did this in Colton, right next door. We were able to demonstrate what some of those facilities look like. So rather than having 3D models, which we'll also have, or having people just kind of imagine in pictures, we want to put something out there that people can experience. So we've actually have all the materials already in our office, so we would just bring it out, set it up, and let people ride it, walk it, that sort of thing, so they really experience what a protected bike lane is, those types of things. We're also going to do social media outreach and online surveys, really get out to the entire city, try to get their input on what's important to them, as far as active transportation, safe routes to school, safe routes to transit, access to parks. This just shows some of the outreach we've been able to get. That 1282 is from the City of Galena, it's actually close to almost 2,000. Surveys that we've had input in, and the one on the top is from the Riverside Transit Authority's first mile, last mile study, which we're also working on. And we're also going to go through social media, Facebook, through the city website, those types of things. We'll create a branding, brand the project as well, so it's recognizable throughout the city. We're also going to do walking tours, we're going to set up a walking tour at each of the schools, and a couple of bike tours throughout the city, walk with the residents, bike with the residents, and really figure out what's really the issues that they see, that's preventing them from walking and biking within the city of Grand Terrace. This is just to show the level of effort that we've done. We've gone almost $17 million worth of grant funding to cities we've worked with, doing active transportation plans. We actually have a little bit more than this, this is just our most recent ones, primarily for the city of Santa Ana and National City, getting them close to about $14 million worth of grant funding. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. Does council have any questions at this time?
I have a question.
Ryanars?
I have a question for staff.
Okay.
I see that we're requesting 250, 733 is the contract amount, and on page 86, on the budget, I see 279. Is there a number that I'm missing in between those two? Page 86, lower right corner?
You're saying page 86?
Yes.
That would be, I think that's related to another item, not item number two.
No, it's 2B.
Oh, okay. Item 2B?
It's K T U.
Oh, I see. Yes, so Councilmember Ryanars, what that is, is the attachment 2B is the original proposal, and that was the original cost proposal. Subsequent to that, I had a discussion with K T U A to revise the scope somewhat to allow staff to factor in about 15% of project management so that we can have our costs reimbursed as well. And so the contract itself, which is attachment 2A, has the amount of $250,733.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? All right, seeing none, I will open up public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing no takers, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of motion.
I will make the motion to accept the Active Transportation Program grant in the amount of $295,000 to establish Fund 77 as the active transportation plan, to authorize revenue expense allocations to the Active Transportation Fund in the amount of $295,000, and approve a contract with K T U A in the amount of $250,733, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and to make any amendments necessary to complete the project, not to exceed the grant amount.
Do we have a second? There's a motion and second, please vote.
Councilmembers Ryanars, Wilson, and Hussey vote yes, Mayor Protem votes yes, Mayor votes yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item three, which is the 2011 bond proceed expenditure agreement.
Mayor Protem, City Council. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager, representing the Finance Department tonight. Other staff report supports council goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. In 2011, prior to the Grand Terrace Community Redevelopment Agency dissolution, the agency issued tax allocation bonds. 2011A, in a little over 15 million, and 2011B, a little over 5.6 million. The bonds were intended to invest in the city's investment projects, to invest in redevelopment projects for the city. However, in February 2012, Governor Brown dissolved all agencies, and the authority to spend the 211 bond proceeds was halted. Now, in September 2015, that dissolution act was amended. So what the Department of Finance told us that if you receive the finding of completion, you're going to be allowed to use at least 5% of those bonds and 15% at a later time, and I will explain that. So based on that, as you are aware, anytime we want to use tax increment, we always have to submit a recognized obligation payment schedule, which we do every six months at one point, and now we're doing annually. So we made that request. We actually requested $739,000. And the way I thought to calculate it, if I issued $15 million in bonds, less that cost, 5%. But they came back and said, no, it's 15 million, less the reserve, less any costs, and less anything you've actually used in your prior ROPS. So that 739 was brought down to 289,000, and that's what they approved us to use. And that was approved in January of this year. Now normally, when any of these things are approved, they always have to be on that ROPS document, meaning if we do not spend it in the period that we intended it for, and we intended it for this six-month period, January to June, we would need to keep putting that on every ROPS or the balance each time we would want to use that, 289,000. So in an effort to avoid that, and surprisingly, it was the D O F analyst that informed me, why does not the agency come up with an agreement with the city to transfer these funds and let the city be responsible for using those in the way it was originally intended? And then the bond covenant said it's for redevelopment projects. And the two cities that I had seen that did it, submitted it to their oversight board and to the Department of Finance and was approved was the City of Glendale and the City of Anaheim. And in addition to that, the City of Blythe had just approved theirs, and they're also going to send one. So before you is a same-like agreement, agreement between the successor agency and the city, which is authorizing the transfer of 289,000 from the successor agency to the city and to be used in accordance with the city's redevelopment plan. So for tonight, we are actually requesting the City Council to approve it for the city, and the City Council asked the successor agency to also approve it, because both organizations have to approve it. In addition to that, you have been provided with updated resolutions. The city attorney had a couple of minor changes to them that we did not get out with the packet. If you would like the detail on that, the city attorney would be more than happy to explain you the changes he actually updated. And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The City Council or the successor agency may have.
Thank you, Director Fortune. Does council have any questions, staff, at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
Just a quick question, just to clarify, Cynthia. So the main objection by the state, even though we've, you know, floated these bonds, and we have $15 million worth of bonds that we've been paying on and so on, is that it was not a voted-for bond, or, I'm trying to figure out where the state gets its feet to stop us using our money.
In my opinion, sir, because they dissolved the agency that actually was initially supposed to develop and use the bonds, therefore, any activity that they were entitled to no longer existed, and that included dispensing the bonds.
But then the city has been the successor agency in that circumstance, so there's a new entity that actually has taken over the administration of the bonds.
That is correct, sir, but the agency that's taken over, their main objective was to see and oversee the wind down of the agency.
Dissolution.
Yes, not to continue redevelopment activities. And using the bond proceeds would have been just continuing redevelopment activity.
My opinion, highway robbery, just, okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll ask if there are any requests for public comment at this time. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, so for all six items?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, second.
All right. Madam Mayor?
Your city attorney.
Let the record reflect that that motion was for the actions of council and of the successor agency board.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and second, please vote.
There are five ayes. Councilmember Hussey, Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Ryanars voted yes, Mayor Protem Robles voted, McEnroe voted yes.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item four, which is the mid-year second quarter and year-end for fiscal year 2016-17.
Mayor Protem, City Council. Tonight for your review is projections for fiscal year 16-17. So the purpose of this report is to provide you with our month in December, so that is projection for year-end and information on our fund balances. In addition to that, we've also included the review of our 17-18 budget guidelines and our proposed budget review schedule. So I'll start with our first six months of our December 2016 monthly financial report. Our first column is our approved budget, which is total revenues of about 4.8 million. And normally during our first six months, we are to expect about a million dollars. And we've actually received 1.129, so we're 40,000 ahead of what we were expecting for the first six months. But based on that, just seeing that we normally get 4.8, as you can see, we've received most of our revenues in the second half of the year. Now, our expenditures, again, with a budget of 4.7, we've expended 2.2 to date. We are right on target with our actuals. And I apologize, those two columns should have said December, not January. So this is just first six months. So again, revenue less expenditures for the first six months, although we are showing, as shown on packet page 111, even if we are in the red, again, as the year progresses, we will balance out towards the end of the year, which brings me to our 2016-17 projections. Okay, so what we've done here is to provide you with a little more information. So we have our approved budget, and we have our 2016-17 year-end projections. And what I also did was provide the 15-16 actuals, so you can see how we are progressing. The actual report actually had two years' worth of actuals, but, yeah, I just wanted to pull up one. So even if we're projecting a 4.8, our approved budget is 4.8, we're actually expecting to receive $5 million in revenue. And this is just, we've seen increase in property taxes and sales tax, and these are our biggest revenue generators. So again, like I said, we're proposing to be almost 200 over what our original projection With our year-end expenditures, and again, this is just a summary, with a 4.7 expenditure budget, we are going to actually, we are projecting 4.785, and we are over a little bit, and that was due to a few things. And as shown on packet page 111 again, we listed the things that contributed to that increase, such as healthcare benefits to retirees, CalPERS replacement benefit for a former physician, and decrease in overhead cost allocation costs. So now we're going to go to the fun part, fund balance. When the auditors come and look at our books and close our audit, one of the big things they look at is the general fund, fund balance. That normally to them determines the majority, well, a city's fiscal stability. So I started with 2015 because this is our last audited fund balance, it's 2.4 million. I listed all the items that City Council had approved since then, roughly about 835,000. We did our 15-16 actuals. And then at the beginning of 16-17, City Council approved the payment of the City Hall loan. And just showing you our year-end projections, we put in a 5 million projection plus a 4.7 The net is 216,000. So basically, because of the loan and because what we're returning, the fund balance for June 30th, this June, is 755,000. But what I'd like to say is revenues less expenditures for this year, we're actually going to be 216 to the good versus what we originally projected when it was adopted, was 133,000. Now, when we requested that the City Hall, Premier City Hall loan be paid, and again, we were saving close to 30,000 or 40,000 in interest by paying it off, we had projected that we would return fund balance to its original level, which is two months of operating revenue, within three years. But because we are returning 200,000 But because we are returning 216 back to fund balance, we're actually returning, within a year, we're returning 75% of what we thought we were going to return. So to continue on the report, much as our fund balance, my projection is 755. Two months of operating for the city as general fund is 833,000, as shown on page 115. And again, when the auditors do come and audit, they will look at that. Do we meet Government Finance Officers Association standards? And actually, we're short, we're going to be short 78,000. So normally what they ask is that City Council is fully aware of that, approve the fact that it stays at 755, and that's why I had written the report this way, with the knowledge that the city intends to restore that to full in fiscal year 17-18. Then they won't make the comment because City Council was made aware and they approved it. However, City Council has other options. To restore it back to its full 833, again, we need a little over 78,000. If City Council recalls, we had moved 400,000 to the fixed asset replacement fund and 200 and change over to the Public Safety Services Fund. Those are still all general fund revenue. So the City Council also has the option of directing staff to return 78,000 of that back to the general fund, then we will meet that JFOA reserve requirement of 833. And City Council has, until all the way to June, that is not a decision that you have to do today. If you would like me to come back and redo that when we come back for the budget, we can. But what the auditors require is, again, City Council set a policy as to what level they would like it to be, yeah, prior to the end of the fiscal year. So next on the list is our proposed budget development guidelines. And the complete list is in the staff report, and we just highlighted a few. And again, personnel budgets will be developed by the Finance Department based on current staffing. And compensation will reflect what Council approved a few weeks ago, what is the adoption of the 40-hour work week, and the approval of that one-time merit increase for those positions who have not reached the top of their salary range. And unless otherwise directed by Council, no cost of living increase at this point. And again, should additional revenue sources be identified, the City Manager may submit personnel budgets that may consist any of the following. Again, he may submit them with merit increases or cost of living. And the way we're going to do that is we will separate that out from the base, so that City Council can see that when we're reviewing any of the requests. And at this point, a general inflation factor will not be applied to contracts unless material contracts are already in place. And capital assets of 5,000 or more, again, will also be separate. So based on that, we've also submitted a proposed budget review schedule that City Council may review. And if there are any changes to the proposed dates after reviewed by City Council, they're more than happy to let me know, and we will adjust accordingly. So that concludes my report, and I will be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Council have any questions of staff at this time? Mayor Protem.
You know, this is going to be part of our budget deliberations, but when you present to me a mid-year budget adjustment for employees going full-time, and then you're saying we're not going to have any cost of livings, I'd like to know what's happening to comparable cities that'd be comparable to ours, and should there be any reasonable expectation of cost of living increases to our employees?
Yes, we can do that, we can submit next year's budget.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you for your report, Director Fortune. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to Council for consideration of a motion. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
This motion passes with five yeses. Councilmember Hussey, Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Reinars voted yes. Mayor Protem Robles voted yes. Mayor McInnes voted yes.
All right, thank you. Move to item five, which is modifications to the 2016-17 budget to reduce overall operational costs for City Manager and Finance Department.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, the City Manager, and we'll just go ahead and, the PowerPoint's there. You, Mayor, and councilmembers and citizens, tonight we have a modification to the 2016-17 budget to reduce the overall operating costs for the City Manager and Finance Department. So the modification of the budget would be, does not require any additional appropriations, because we're basically staying within the limits that we currently have. It's a change in our strategy in terms of how we're going to finish off this fiscal year. At the start of 2016-17, the fiscal year, our strategy was to hire an ACM to manage the economic development component of the city. However, the City Manager, myself, will lead the effort on the economic development, and our new ACM, Cynthia Fortune, will assist more with admin and finance. Therefore, staff will be adjusted to accommodate our new strategy. In addition to the time is right for the city to bring finance in-house instead of contracting out the services. And so this is one of the interesting components that we have, is historically, we've always talked about the private sector can do it cheaper than the public sector. And traditionally, it's because of the public employee retirement system. But the recent changes to the public employment retirement system, the CalPERS system, has kind of brought into compliance where it's actually cheaper for the city to provide the services internally versus a for-profit company currently have with Willdan. So it would be a financial savings for the city. Give me an example. Here are our current Finance Department. It costs us about $194,000 to have a finance director. In addition to that, an additional $56,000 of a principal accountant. Executive assistant for the city is $72,000. And then the administrative intern is about 18,000, and then we have another administrative intern for another 18,000. So we're working with really about $360,000 to provide those services. So in the new reorg, what we're going to be doing, and remember, we've kind of taken the expertise that we had with the finance director, who has now become our assistant City Manager. And so we're going to be moving forward with the City Finance Manager to be able to handle the financial component of it. We're also going to be bringing the principal accounting position in-house. This is a part-time position. And just kind of let the Council know is, when this position is also part-time in the Willdan contract, the position was $56,000, and it probably had an overhead markup. The actual take-home pay and the salary for the employee would be exactly the same, but on the one with Willdan Association, there was an overhead that they added. And all of our costs include a comparison based on the full cost, and our full cost including salaries and benefits. And so we made a slight adjustment for the assistant to the City Manager, from the executive assistant to the City Manager. The assistant to the City Manager will actually be helping the City Manager with the economic development component of moving forward with the city. The next item we have is, we're going to only have one administrative intern instead of the two that we have budgeted in this particular year. And then we have, we're going to be having an office specialist to run the front counter for the City Manager's office, City Clerk's office, and the Finance Department. So if we take that overall cost, 346,000, that's our new cost. And we do a comparison to what the cost was under the Willdan contract and our overall cost, so we see there is a savings in this particular area. And once again, the major component to the savings is because the for-profit company has a reasonable profit margin, but the new changes to the Pepper allows us not to have the exorbitant CalPERS retirement cost. So we anticipate it's about a $17,000 savings for bringing the contract in-house, as we also make some modifications to the City Manager's budget. So one of the things that we've talked about in the past, that the Council's well aware of, is this thing called unfunded liabilities. And so when we talk about unfunded liabilities, we're looking at when the city hires an employee, let's say employee's been working for the city for 10 years. Well, back in 2008, when CalPERS projected that they were going to have a certain return on their profits, they didn't make that profit return. So they come back to the city and say, well, you know, for the last three years, we were expecting to get 16%, we only got 7%, therefore, you need to make up that amount. So that becomes the unfunded liability. And so they carry that on your books the entire time until they anticipate the employee is going to be retiring at a 30-year period. So with the new Pepper system and the new employees coming on board, there is no unfunded liability because we're paying right on time and the projections are on target. We'll just cover that. Okay, and as I said before, we're expecting to have a savings of about $17,000 annually. So also, we're going to be asked the Council to delete several positions that are in the budget, the executive assistant and the intern position, and we're going to be replacing them with, ask the Council to actually approve new job classifications and also set new salaries for the two positions of the Finance Manager and also the Assistant to the City Manager. With that, I'm available for any questions the Council may have.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Can you tell me why it's important for us to remove these from the budget?
Sure. If we don't remove the positions from the budget, we would then be adding to the budget, and we'd go over our annual appropriations. So in terms...
Even though we're not going to fill those positions?
Well, even though we're not going to fill those positions, it's kind of a cleanup measure to eliminate those positions. But there wouldn't be any costs for that. We would just have the positions added.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Councilmember Hussey.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions here. I know, congratulations, Ms. Fortune, for your new promotion here and welcome aboard for, you know, city employee. And I know we're saving money by bringing that in. Now, the thing is, you know, saving money for what the city's running, I'm a little confused and concerned. I know we're looking at saving $17,678 with your readjustment, but if we don't bring in these extra titles and give them increases, we could even save more. I want to know what the difference between an executive assistant and assistant to the manager, because one of the reasons why we got assistant City Manager was to help you on that, you know, for you're doing economic development. So that's why we approved that, that's what I'm going back to.
Right.
And why do we need assistant to help the assistant and you when we have the executive assistant? And I don't, you know, the job title for executive assistant, I thought that's to help the City Manager and do that. And then we're increasing the executive assistant's pretty much his salary or her salary, whoever it is, going to the, you know, that's from 72,000 to 97,000, it's a $25,000 increase in salary and benefits. And then we're doing interns, so then we're bringing an office specialist to do the, pretty much, executive assistant job at 51,000, when we used to pay the executive assistant 72,000. So my thing and my concern is, I don't know why we're moving titles around and we're increasing salaries when the executive assistant, I don't know what the daily, what his job description is, why the executive assistant can't help the City Manager, if he does help the City Manager, and we have the interns that help out on that. I'm not for switching, I mean, if you want to switch a title, switch a title, but I'm not for increasing the salary on it. I just want to know what your assistant manager, or assistant to the manager is going to do a difference from the executive assistant.
Sure. And so what happens is, the executive assistant that we currently have, that position, that position is the, sort of, the secretary or the assistant to the City Manager. So it's actually manning the telephone system, keeping the calendar, doing all those things. The assistant to the City Manager is actually more of a, it's more of an analyst position, but it's more of an independent analyst position. And also, so there will be no scheduling of calendars tied to the desk. It would really be actually helping promote economic development, helping promote the information, helping going out to solicit and act as an ombudsman to businesses when they come in, and being able to work independently and taking direction from the City Manager, being able to, if we're working on a project, whether it's a housing project or a new business coming into town, making sure to work with that business to be able to focus in on and be able to move the item forward. The executive assistant position is a position that really is sort of a position that's permanent and it's tied to the front counter. Now, there are other things that you can do in terms of just assisting, but it's really maintaining the office. But versus the level of experience and the type of work that you're going to be requesting from the assistant to the City Manager is far different than what you would get from an executive assistant. And so, and then also, having the office specialist, that person really is kind of managing the telephone calls, keeping the calendar, working with the City Clerk's office, working with, doing filing. It's as if, to really be as efficient as possible, so you notice that we're not having an executive assistant, I didn't request to leave the executive assistant there and then hire an assistant to the City Manager, because the type of tasks that we're going to be asking the office specialist to do is less than what we'd be asking the executive assistant to do. And so we were able to actually kind of partial out the responsibilities and have someone focus in on handling the day-to-day operations of manning a front counter, and then taking the other analytical tougher task and working independently as the assistant to the City Manager. And another distinct difference in that too is, the assistant to the City Manager is an at-will position. So, and it's that way on purpose to allow for any City Manager to come in and get its own staff to be able to tweak the position, to be able to make sure that you have the right need. And it also doesn't tie the city down to, if things ebb and flow two years from now, it's an easy access for the city to reduce the overall liability versus having to have a permanent employee with status and so on and so forth.
I understand, Mr. Jeffery, but you know, one thing too is, you know, we're presenting because when we hired Ms. Fortune to save the city money, and we're still saving a little bit, 17,000. But my thing is, you know, because when I first got on the Council, when we had the interns City Manager, we didn't need an executive assistant. All right? And then also, we needed executives.
That's not what I said.
No, it was the other one. So then we needed one because we said, now we not do that. Now, your focus that you brought to the Council, my understanding, was to have assistant City Manager to take on a task that you just told me what the assistant to the manager's doing to help you out on that. So I don't, I have a hard time seeing the executive assistant move to assistant City Manager, which is fine, but I don't see the pay raise on the job description. If you wanted to do that, you know, why can't you do the admin intern, do the answer the phones and file and all that stuff, and you could do the executive assistant? Because where I worked, the executive assistant also works hand-in-hand and does that, what you just talked about. They're the assistant. So I'm looking at, this one, I'm looking at, to save the money, not moving titles around, we hired the... We hired the assistant city manager already, and I think that we should, you know, I'm going back to opinion now, but I'm thinking that, you know, we, because prior experience was when we do all this renegotiation, removing everything, the next thing you know, we're coming up, hey, it didn't work out, we need to do this, you know, we have to bring in a financial person. That's what, how I'm looking at, looking in the-
Okay. Here's the thing that I want to sort of express to the council. We can operate clearly at the same level. We can eliminate positions at the same level. But this is what I need in order to move the city forward. There are so many things that are going to be happening, from the EIFD, from the Lewis project, from our parcels that we own that we're trying to liquidate, from, there's so many things. And what I have to look at is the capacity. I don't have the capacity to meet the demands that this council wants to happen. And what I'm saying is, this is what I believe the resources that I need to be able to accomplish the tasks that we have. And I have to be flexible. If I try to look at what I currently have, if I had, one of the things that's very important to me is finances. Okay? And I monitor that very well. But when the opportunity came up, you know, we had some issues with some potential liabilities with the Willdan contract. Even though we think that we're okay, CalPERS is looking at this differently. So when the opportunity came up to hire Miss Fortune, that was great. I don't have to focus in on that. I was going to focus in on that when we were going to have the assistant to the city manager do economic development. But things change, and so I have to be flexible. I'd be the first one to admit, if this change doesn't work, I'll come back to you and say it doesn't work. But I'm confident that there is so much going on with our half a billion dollar Midas program, with the amount of effort that we're putting in for multiple economic development projects, that, and I'm very comfortable in knowing that our finance department, with the tweak of a finance manager and Mrs. Fortune's background, we're going to be really solid there on that level. The sheer fact that we're coming forward and we're making an adjustment, we're really keeping the lid on the budget this year. In addition to that, we're keeping the lid on and we're actually doing more than we had anticipated. So I understand, but I've gotten to the point where I need to request the tools that I need to do the job. And I ask you this, and this is what I tell the employees, tell me what you need to get the job done. But when I give you that, my expectation is, the job's going to get done. And so I hold myself to the same standards. If you give me these resources, I can manage the city to the level and give you the expectations that you're looking for. And I know the council is looking for, to, we have one great shot to take our land that's vacant and turn it into something that's going to be, enhance the quality of life for the citizens and generate revenue for the city so we can get those quality of life efforts. I believe that this is, these are the tools that I need in order to do that. I don't make these changes lightly. I don't want to give an employee just a raise because it's, I like the employee. This is really about business, and it's about the city's business, and these are the tools that I need.
Well, Mr. Duffy, I know, and I wanted to give you the tools, but the tools were asked before, and now you're asking for additional tools, because the tools were asked for the assistant. Now, I'm just going to close at this. Why can't we just change the title from the executive assistant, keep, and make him assistant city manager, keep him at $72,000, and then bring in your office specialist at $51,000? Why is it such a big pay raise? If it's just, you know, he's going to do a different job description, it's not that, I don't think it's that much of a difference on there.
Well, so we're talking about, we're talking about, you're referencing as an individual. And you may be right, it may be an individual, but I'm referencing it as a position. The task associated with the things that I'm going to be asking the person to do is consistent with the job classifications that I'm asking you to approve. And as I said, if it's the council's desire to make that adjustment, I can work with it. It's not going to give me what I need to get the job done, but I'll make it happen.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Mayor Protem.
I have a question, and then I want to get into some other, my concerns on this. I'm seeing a technical problem here where, and let me say for the audience, you know, here, I got this late Thursday. And you can see, this is very, very intense, detailed. And so, I mean, I took a rare trip to go visit a new grandson, and so, and I also had a baby shower at my home, and I'm trying to read this and deal with a CEO evaluation for the omnitrans that I serve on, and I have a meeting with the city manager on Monday. So you can see, it's pretty compressed. And one of the things that we've been talking about is getting things like on a Wednesday. This is just too close to get Thursday evening and Friday, I'm dealing with, no staff is here, and we're into, you know, a weekend. And then it's the city council meeting. One of the technical things that I see here, in the background, we're asking for budget authority for an assistant to the city manager and a finance manager. And I think the office specialist. Then it says that we don't need budget authority because it's fully funded. You don't need an appropriation because it's fully funded by the reduction of professional services contracts. I don't understand, because a professional services contract is under a different series. It's not, it's not a budget authority for a position. And I'm going to tell you what I need. This is my second term on the council, and we have one member that was here when they had to lay off a number of people. We have, in the four years that I was here, we've gone through city clerk after city clerk after city clerk. We've gone through executive assistant after executive assistant after executive assistant. As the last meeting, we brought up about, we need a 40-hour work week to get the job Now, all of a sudden, we're presented with this item, and I really didn't see any clues that this was coming up. It was pretty rapid that this is going to happen. And it happened when we had a public works director that came and left, and I don't even know how long he was here, I don't even know, it was months. We had an excellent city clerk who came in and rescued us as far as getting the city clerk work done, and she's gone. So I'm having a difficult time, and I understand giving you what you need to get the job done. But let me tell you, I was having a slow burn here, and it just went over the top for me. The woman that came and spoke to the public is my husband's cousin, and other than a cousin, she's a 37-year resident of Grand Terrace, and she's a friend of mine. She can't even call her elected relative on this council and get appropriate follow-through to an issue she's had. I've had to bring it up countless times, and I've gotten, and I'm sorry to have to do this to you, but I've gotten countless erroneous information and feedback on it. Then, right before I come to the meeting, I get a text message from the gentleman about his streetlight issue, and I had asked, because remind you, you know, as a council, we're not going to direct staff on how to solve a problem, but it's important that when people are frustrated with their government and they have elected representatives, they can come to us, and we can ask on their behalf what's going on and get some kind of response. And that's not happening. It's just, I'm spending a lot of time having to remember what I asked for and to get some kind of feedback. So when I see all of this, and we're spending more money, and we have people on the next item that want to see about increasing sheriff's services, it's just something that, yeah, I understand, we have to give you what you need to get done. But also, some things have to change. These agenda items have to be more concise, they have to be clear, and they have to be more timely when they're presented to us. I would like to see, so that we're in concert, you know, new city manager, and also, no fault of anybody that we've had to have turnover in city managers because we had temporaries. But we really need to have a workshop where the new elected people and us, you know, for this next four years, we talk about what our policy direction is going to be to you, so that we're in concert with what your vision is with the staff. So, you know, I'm deliberating with my peers, so, you know, I understand Mr. Hussey's concerns, and I'm a bit kind of like, well, do we want to do this incrementally? You know, so I'm waiting to hear from the others on this, why we weigh this. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me discuss this.
Did you have a question in there too?
Yeah. About the budget appropriation, the budget authority. How do you get budget appropriation out of salaries and benefits from professional services agreement?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Protem, Cynthia Fortune. When the city council approves the department, the budget, you approve at the fund level. And although when we submit it, you're right, we have line item budgets for professional services for salaries for benefits. Once a budget is approved, the city manager has that authority to move approved line item budgets, again, within that fund, from one to another. So if he is going to have savings in his professional services line item, yes, we do documentation and move that to salaries or benefits or materials under his authority.
Well, I'm, professional services agreements is in the same fund as salaries and benefits?
Yes.
That's odd to me.
Well, let's first say general fund, yeah. Yes, each fund will have, in the general fund, let's say, for example, we have several departments, building, safety, parks maintenance, facilities, maintenance, finance. Now, each department will also have a budget for salaries for the employees that are in there, the materials, the supplies, and the professional services that they contract out. So each fund actually will have a set of salary accounts, benefit accounts, professional services accounts, material accounts, and equipment accounts.
You're saying essentially it's a sub-fund that he's-
If you want to call it that, yes. It can be sub-fund, sub-account.
Where that I've worked, salaries and benefits were 1,000 series, professional services contracts were 2,000 series. And you could play around within the 1,000 series, you could play around the 2,000 series, but you couldn't unless you went back to your governing body.
I see. And I guess maybe for the county, that's the way it worked, but you are correct. Salaries and benefits are still a different series, if you will. Professional services are one, and office and supplies are another. However, in the cities that I have been in, when a city council approves, they do approve at the fund level. Therefore, the city manager has the authority to move the approved budget line items in between those series.
And I think what we're trying to say too, in this particular area, is that we're not asking for any additional appropriation above what the council has approved. So if you had a $5.2 million budget, we're not asking for a 5.25 because of an increase. So, and Mayor Protem, having worked for the county also, I understand exactly what you're saying. And I think that literally what my experience here is, I wouldn't come to you and ask, I wouldn't add those positions or use that money without coming back to the council. So you're approving the new classifications, you're approving the positions, and I'm going to use the excess of money within the fund. And as Miss Fortune said, we're treating it as a general fund, and you're talking about the categories which it's placed into.
Right. Because without budget authority-
Right.
-you can have all the money in the world, but you can't spend it on that.
Right. And so we're saying we're not asking for an additional appropriations. We're really referencing that we're not asking to go above the current budget amount.
Okay. Understand.
You satisfied with that, Mayor Protem? Any other questions of staff? All right. Seeing none, I will, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Reiners.
Mr. City Manager, so under Pepper, is there no potential for unfunded liability?
Well, there's a, there's a very minor, for example, unless Pepper, well, I guess one of the things that Miss Fortune could probably help out here is that, so CalPERS recently reduced their overall projections from the 7.2 to 7%. And so if they had left that projection there, and then they discovered two years later on that they'd lost that, they were short that 2%, they would come after, they would come after you for that particular level. But you get, every two years, you get a kind of an actuarial to tell you exactly where you are. So, I can't say there's never a potential for that, but certainly, I don't believe that it's a significant issue by adding these positions.
How many finance people do we have right now with Willdan, as it currently is structured?
We have four. We have a finance director, a part-time principal accountant, and we have two support staff. And those two support staff positions, the entire Willdan contract will be phased out at the end of 2017, June 2017.
So they will go back to Willdan?
So they will go back to Willdan, and we will come to the council and ask about, see what we need internally. And yet again, those positions are actually cheaper to hire within than the Willdan contract.
So there could be more for the finance?
Absolutely. And, you know, one of the things that's extremely important here is that the city does have some exposure, because what's happening is, the, CalPERS is saying that companies like Willdan's, which means that these employees are coming into the city and they're working just like city employees. They're housed by the city, they're using, you know, the city's providing everything for, and you can't distinguish between that. So CalPERS is saying, well, we're going around and we're investigating to see if you're trying to skirt the CalPERS system. And so we've done the legal analysis, and Richard says we believe that we are, we're okay, but there's still, the legal opinion says basically that someone could come in and interpret it a different way. So having that information is one of the reasons why also I'm making the move to try and bring those positions internally.
I don't know that I have an issue necessarily with bringing it in-house. I think, was there any concern that maybe this makes us a little top-heavy? Because we have an assistant city manager now whose specialty is finance, and then we're going to bring in a $97,000 finance manager. Could you work with something other than a finance manager, since we have an assistant city manager who's so well-versed in finance?
We certainly can. One of the things that we can do is, we can look at, so there's a principal financial analyst, there's a, there could be a series that you could look at. We chose the finance manager because one of the things that we have, we have the finance, well, the finance director now that's a Willdan employee. We don't have, we have a part-time HR person. We, we are able to manage what we have now. If we're talking about forecasting and getting ahead of the curve, we're not there. We can, you know, we'll make it work. The recommendation after consulting with Miss Fortune was that she believed that she needed the level of the finance manager, and in addition to the part-time principal accountant. You might want to go to a full-time principal accountant. What that really means is, you're going to have Miss Fortune be heavier in that particular area. area. But that, I mean, it's certainly doable.
Because my vision is that basically with this new organization, we will have basically two finance managers stacked on top of each other. And that's what I was kind of looking at, other than paying the full price for another finance manager. And, let's see what else I got. That's good for me for now. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Wilson.
It's not unusual in private situations for a lot of people to wear different hats. And in my mind, we have had some complaint in this body that we have lost some of our institutional memory because of the things that had to happen around 2008 and forward. I think it's important for us to be able to at least keep a core in relation to that, and when we have strengths in finance, we have strengths that we really, really needed a long time ago. And we got in trouble. And I would really hate to see that happen again. So personally, I think this is our direction. I don't, I guess the expression is, why mess with success? If we're not paying any more money at this juncture, and we have the authority to say yes or no if we're going to pay more money, then let's go with what's being recommended. The city manager really has the authority and the expertise to advise us as well as work for us. And I see, in this particular case, he's seeing how he can manipulate his situation after a year's worth of experience in this post, and say, okay, I don't need somebody to type for me, and answer the phones for me, but I do need somebody that's going to be strong in finance to be able to keep my back. And we've got a lot of heavies that are going to be hitting us in relation to our development that's going to be coming up, and we certainly don't want to get underwater. So I am fully in favor of what's being proposed.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Director Cynthia Fortune, being the finance director, being moved to assistant city manager, what additional duties will she be given in that role?
Sure. She will be responsible for the primary responsibility for all of our admin and finance components. So she'll be responsible for going through our HR system, making sure that our, even our JPIA, our liability issues there. She'll be responsible for assisting me, in addition to, we're talking about finance and admin, but she's been responsible with other parts of the organization. She'll be responsible for, as we move forward with bonds, as we move forward with legislation, as we move forward with all those particular areas. And one of the big pushes the council has talked about is grants. And I think we have all learned, especially I have over the last five years, that we don't have the money to do all the things that we want. The money really is at the regional level. And so some of the things that we can, as the mayor and the Mayor Portem sit on regional agencies, and there's grants for air quality grants, there's grants for trans-arena development, all those different grants, all those things that are out there, those are the things that Ms. Fortune will assist me on, in addition to, I'm doing economic development projects, but there's more to that. There's financing for EIFDs, which the council talked about us moving forward with. There's how do you brownfield funding? There's all these different components. There's how to tie in, for example, we have projects that we have funding for that we don't have the staff to get the things done. We have that Barton Road Bridge project that is just sitting there. We won't get to that unless we have the proper components. But part of that whole thing is getting together your financial information together to be able to put forward the plan. The finance manager is going to be responsible for managing and ensuring that our regular operations and our checks and balances are done, and that our audit is completed, and so on, and so on. The ACM is going to be responsible for that oversight, but also going to be responsible for longer-term master projects. For example, our master fee schedule, that's out of compliance. That's not our compliance. It's not where I think it should be. It's how do we get the EIFDs funded? How do we get brownfield? How do we get the, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, we're managing, and we're managing fine, but we want to do more than just manage. And in order to take the city, I believe, where you want to go, we have to have the right people in the right places. And yes, Ms. Fortune has been, I'll give you an example, and I'll stop. When I came on board, I talked to all the employees. But Ms. Fortune can tell you, she received a nine-page document from me the day I walked in, and it asked her a series of questions and information. Within one week, she came in and she answered all those questions, and so she let me know that our financial guardian actually understood where we were. And so it's great as a city manager to say, I can trust you, I don't have to monitor this. But she shows potential to be able to take the city in a much greater direction. So it actually worked out well hiring her. Her request, in terms of how we backfill, was the level of the finance manager. And just like I make my request to get what I need, when she makes the request that she believes, I'm going to support her on that level.
Okay. Councilmember Hussey.
Mr. Delfi, it's not like, you said the Barton Road Bridge. You know, it's not like we haven't given, the council hasn't given you personnel you need. You know, for instance, the public works director, we split up Sandra Melena's job to give her more opportunity working on that, and we brought in another person. So we've been working with you on that, and, you know, your say was, you need the public work director to go ahead and take care of all those, the roads, the bridges, whatever things. So we did that for you. My only concern is, you know, I know we're saving money, we're bringing somebody in, and, you know, now you're asking for another assistant. Okay, you, you know, this is your area of expertise, but I still think that, me personally, what I would like to see, you know, is you move the executive assistant to a different title and keep the salary the same, and you bring in the office manager to save even more money, if you want to do that. Now, I don't know who you have, you know, planned, or what the experience is on that, you know, that's your thing. But, you know, it kind of troubled me when you said, you know, you need to have, you know, the tools, and I think the council's been very generous in giving you the tools and stuff. But I just, you know, did I hear you wrong on that thing?
No, sir. I didn't, I did not mean to imply that you have not given me the tools. What I'm trying to say is, and someone told me this, so I'm trying to say is that if you give me these tools, I can accomplish more. And ultimately, you know, I just have to be very clear to the council. It's my performance. If what I'm not doing, I'm giving you the strategy and this plan. If you don't see it working, then that's a performance issue on my part. And I'm not one to ask you to give me something, and you're not going to get a return on it. And I used to, when I used to operate in Sacramento, in a big organization, I was always leery of, the first thing people say they need is more staff. Because I used to call it the blob. Give them more staff, and the blob just takes over. It just takes over, and you don't see any results. That's not where I'm going. Because I believe that Grand Terrace has significant potential, as we talk about being the center of the illin empire. The location is, and the quality of life is significant. And so when you look at all the potential that we have, you're right, we have a public works director, we made those changes. But it doesn't stop there. I'm going to come back to you later on and say, in order to get these engineering projects done, I need to hire engineers to be able to do this project. They're fully self-funded. There are so many significant projects that we can do. Now, I say that, and I say that under the guise of this, projects that we can afford to do, that we can maintain to enhance where we're going. It's not, I'm just not going to hire people just to try and pad City Hall. My goal here is that I'm looking at the capacity of the organization, and I'm saying, under the current capacity that we have, we can't accomplish what I think the city wants me to accomplish. I fully accept full responsibility for what you have before you, and I expect to be held accountable for that, absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Mayor Portem?
Yeah, I really appreciate all my colleagues. They really bring some really important perspectives to the discussion here. I guess what remains for me is, I know, you know, we want to give you the tools, and, you know, based on your performance, and then, you know, if we're not satisfied, we can reorganize, you know, we can take away things. But I just want to ask, because we also have to be thorough, if you have an assistant city manager whose principal job description is going to be economic development, and they're not going to do that, then why can't they do some of the finance management things? Because if we do an EFID, a contract person's going to get the bond issue and scoring and stuff, you know. So, we're a small city. So once, you know, there's some budget tasks done, and you're monitoring, we're not doing a whole lot of high finance here at this point. And if we are, it's going to, a lot of it's going to be contracted out. So I'm kind of curious about this change.
Right. So, one of those, you talked about EIFD. So if you do an EIFD, you're going to, there's an administrative process that gets you there. We're going to have a consultant absolutely that's going to help us out with that. But at the end of the day, you're going to end up with a potentially $15, $20 million worth of bond finance to be able to help. In addition to that, as we talked about earlier, you had the bond proceeds for the 5 percent. In addition to that, we're going to come back with an additional $4 million for the bond proceeds. And so you have those financial components that I don't expect the finance manager to be able to handle. I expect the finance manager is going to be processing that material. But I expect that the ACM is going to be ensuring that we get the information from those different organizations to get it there in the oversight. So there's, I think there's a lot of moving parts that the ACM, as part of the overall executive management of the city, is going to be facilitating and moving that stuff forward. The finance manager is going to be ensuring that all the checks and balances, think of it this way, there are processes and there are projects. The finance manager will be a processor of the information, ensure that we're in compliance. The ACM will also act as an oversight of the process, but will be more of a project manager to ensure that the overall umbrella of our financial situation works, from whether it's special funds, whether it's bond funds, whether it's general fund, whether it's the number of different funds that we have. There are so many different components that we can go in, in terms of finance, in terms of bonds, in terms of EIFDs, and cap and trade, and it goes, and new market tax credits, and all these different things, that the finance director, the manager will not be handling, but the ACM will be a key part of that.
Yeah. So I'm looking at packet page number 149. Because I guess my next question is going to be, what is the labor market survey meaning other comparable cities? So it's kind of interesting that the city of Beaumont that did a heck of a lot of, I mean, they're the most heavily taxed city that had scandal and the FBI, mind you. And so I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, they don't have a comparable. Because they had a consultant that was pretty much bilking the taxpayer. Calamaisa doesn't. Colton does, but they're considerably larger. Diamond Bar doesn't. Highland doesn't. City of Laverne has a accounting manager. Lake Elsinore doesn't. Long Melinda has an accounting manager. City of Moreno Valley has a financial division manager. On and on and on. And then here's little Grand Terrace with a finance manager. Just seems a little bit rich.
Well, and the classification studies of the labor market, they have a standard number of cities in which they actually go and do the review with. And I think that the important, well, what I would say is, if you look at that, are we recommending something that is out of the market? And I think that we're, the recommendation is it's within the market range. I understand. And as I said before, this is really a policy decision.
What's the difference between an accounting manager and a finance manager? Long Melinda has an accounting manager and...
I think that is just a choice of theirs. They should be very, very close. If you want to get typical, an accounting is strictly just debit and credit.
Duties of a finance manager versus the duties of an accounting manager.
Yeah. And again, I would say they are close, but accounting will specifically only be accounting. When we say that, that is recording every revenue or expense that comes in. A finance will have a little bit more. That may include purchasing, budget monitoring, and analysis, and that's, and again, not seeing what these cities' specifications are for that, that would, you know, offhand, that would be my answer.
Well, Mayor, I think, and Mayor Portem, if you look at packet page 145, and you look at the job classifications, you'll see that the finance manager usually reports to a finance director. So it is possible that the finance, the positions listed on that, they may be, the accounting manager may be reporting to a finance director in the city's various, so on and so on. So in this particular case, we said we don't, we're not going to have a finance director. We're going to have the ACM actually oversee the finance manager. Instead of, so we're actually kind of filling that gap. But the job specs said, basically, reports to the finance director and receive oversight from the assistant city manager. We're not going to have a finance director. And that's one of the ways in which we're trying to be as lean as possible.
Any other questions?
Oh, one last. From personal experience, when you have a lot of bonds and a lot of bond activity, you have an accounting and finance manager that can get stretched out. But we're, you know, I'm just going to end with this, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this position. I think it can really be accomplished at this level of city, with the skill set of an assistant city manager, to do this. And at the very least, until we're at the point that we have bond proceeds more significant than we have now, I don't see, I don't see how we justify this. This is a huge amount of money that's going to be potentially in the budget year after year, if we don't carefully weigh it now. I'm not convinced about this particular position.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. See, no takers. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move the item for approval in accordance with the recommendation.
So you're looking at all three of the recommendations from staff here?
And delete positions in the 2016-17 budget to reduce the overall operating cost of managing the city's finance in the city manager's office, eliminate city... Eliminate city manager's executive assistant. Add assistant to the city manager, office specialist, principal accountant, part-time and finance manager. In addition, staff is requesting council approve new job classification, set salaries for positions of assistant to the city manager and finance manager. No budget appropriation requested. The positions be fully impounded, salaries and benefits, by reduction of professional service contract in a limited position. Item two, approve resolution 2017 dash blank amending the 2016-17 approved budget, revising 2016-17 adopted position authority. And number three, approve resolutions 2017 blank rescinding resolution 2016 dash zero three and establish new classification slash salary ranges for the employees of the city of Grand Terrace.
Is there anyone that will second this? All right, when I look at this, and I look that the city manager has asked for resources he needs to do the job that he says he's going to do, and he found a way to do it and save money. I think we're trying to choose his team for him by looking at the titles. And so I will second it for the, for the sake of a vote. So at this time, would you please vote on this item?
The motion fails. Three noes, two yeses. Councilmember Hesse, councilmember Reinars, Mayor Protem Robles voted no. Councilmember Wilson, Mayor McInnes voted yes.
Okay. So with my colleagues that have voted no, will one of you please offer an alternate motion on this item?
Trying to think of the right term. I'd like to table this and bring it back with the input that we've given you and see what you guys conceptualize and, and will work for us.
Okay, well, tabling it would mean we're not going to revisit it. So is there something in here that you would like to have removed? I know you don't want an accounting, or you don't want a finance manager.
Yeah.
So if this, would you want to make the motion by, by requesting that that be taken out of this?
I could do that. So I make a motion to, for the recommendation with the deletion of a finance manager position.
Okay. Is there anyone that will second that one? Okay, I don't have a second. Is there another alternate motion? Or are we saying that we are not going to give our city manager any more resources than what he has at this time?
I would like to see the employees brought in-house. I like that part of it. And remove Will Dan from the equation, because that in and of itself saves money. And then if we could look at the additional positions separately. So I guess for now, my motion would be just to leave it the way it is and bring them in-house.
In what positions would they be brought in-house? And those were the positions that were being suggested.
The executive assistant, and then whoever is in finance, right now.
Okay, Mr. Duffy, who's in finance right now?
So in finance right now, we have the finance director, a principal accountant, it's part-time, a, and two support staff, which would be...
And so councilmember Reinars, you're saying you would like us to have a finance director, a part-time accountant, and then two accounting assistants?
Minus the finance director.
Okay, so we'll have a part-time accountant and two assistants?
Until we figure out what that next position's going to be. Mr. Duffy had suggested a senior analyst.
I think the senior analyst was actually a description of his assistant to the city manager.
No, I think that was when I had brought up the objection to the, the full finance manager position. He said he could work with a senior analyst.
For, I, I made a reference to the assistant to the city manager being a higher level than a, than a management analyst. Certainly if...
Okay, I'm going to recommend this. I think we need a diagram. And I think we're talking about assistants, and I think we're talking about office assistants and executive assistants, and then at the same time, we're talking about finance managers and accountants and, and assistants. And we're talking about Will Dan that has different job descriptions.
May I make a, may I make a suggestion, Mayor? If I could? Because we're so close to the new fiscal year. If the council were willing to support the positions other than the finance director, we can, the finance manager, we can certainly have Miss Fortune fill in for that position and come back to the council in the new budget, with the, with the proper, with, give you some options for the finance manager component, whether it's an analyst, or whether it's a senior analyst, or whether it's an accounting manager. So we can certainly work for the next three months with Miss Fortune filling, filling the gap in. But I would really like to move forward with all the other recommendations, if that's possible.
Okay, and councilmember Hesse, you had an issue with the other positions?
Yes, I don't, you said, Mr. Duffy, to have is what he needs to succeed, but I think just moving the title from executive assistant to assistant city manager, keeping his salary the same, excuse me.
Excuse me, assistant city manager is actually...
I mean, assistant to the manager. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's very confusing. It's very confusing.
Everybody's changing their name tags, so. But just change the executive assistance title to the assistant to the city manager, keeping the salary the same, and bring in the office specialist to answer the phones, and then file, and then help the future city clerk if we get one, because I believe...
Okay, so, so your objection isn't to the assistant to the city manager. Your objection is the salary range for that position?
Correct. I just suggest just, if you do a title change, and then add the other one, and that's it. Will still save money.
We got a lot of recommendations here.
Can we bring this one back with all these changes? As Mayor Protem said earlier, at the next meeting? Because I think now we've really delineated what our issues were, and if we could bring this back to vote on. Because I think right now, to vote on it, in what's in front of us, we have a lot of changes made. All right, so that's direction, right? Thank you. We're going to move on to item number six. And I know that all of you have been waiting for item number six. And I'm going to make you wait seven minutes longer, as I'm going to take a recess for seven minutes at this point. I'm so dumb, it's third world.
I've been, because I'm outside here, I've been getting thoughts, rooms, I'm not sleeping at night, so.
I went over there, and, and, you know, these girls I have. Okay, come back in six months. Oh, and go get a blood test. I'm sitting there forty-five minutes.
I haven't gone to the doctor yet, so fly-by-night, please.
All right, we are on item number six. The discussion of public safety and levels of service. Lieutenant Wolf?
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public. My name is Doug Wolf. I'm a lieutenant with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. And one of my responsibilities is overseeing patrol for the city of Grand Terrace. Today, I'm going to be going over the Grand Terrace patrol staffing levels. And this was an item that was brought to me by council, and they asked me to put this on. What I'll cover during this presentation, I'll go over our current staffing levels out of Central Station. Central Station is located at the corner, near the corner of Third and Waterman in the city of San Bernardino. Out of that station, we run Grand Terrace, of course, Loma Linda, San Manuel Casino, Loma Linda Community Hospital, and also we run our, cover our county areas out of there as well. So it's, it's quite a large operation. Also, I'll go over the historical staffing levels for Grand Terrace, and I'll go back to 2005. My hopes, if approved, if, if any additional positions are approved, is, is increasing the safety for our employees that are out there in the field, and of course, providing a level of service, or improving the level of service, that all of the citizens of Grand Terrace, I'm sure, want and deserve. Also, I'll be going over some crime stats and some other Grand Terrace statistics. And at the end, I'll give a couple of recommendations. So our current staff, staffing levels for Central Station. These are the stations that I mentioned earlier. Central, Loma Linda, Loma Linda Community Hospital, San Manuel Casino, Grand Terrace. And then the bottom one is Grand Terrace pre-2010. So let's go over Central Station first. During a 24-hour operation, we try to fill three positions, minimum of two, 24/7. We also have one 40-hour sheriff service specialist, which is a civilian employee that goes out during the day. It's a, it's a 40-hour work week, Monday through Friday, and they're out assisting patrol operations there in the county for the two or three deputies that are out there 24/7. So now we'll go down to Loma Linda. Loma Linda has two patrol units 24/7, one 40-hour cover unit, and that cover unit works 40 hours in a work week. And they're placed strategically to be in position to handle where the calls for service are the highest. Also, they have two 40-hour traffic cars. And again, with the, with the hospital there, traffic is a big issue. These two patrol units are also placed when traffic issues are the heaviest during that work week. Also, they have that 40-hour sheriff service specialist as well to assist with their operations. Loma Linda Community Hospital, that's another contract of ours, and we provide one unit there 24/7. Now granted, if that deputy needs help, something is occurring that they need additional support, of course, they're surrounded by either that two or four units that are available in Loma Linda. San Manuel Casino, they have two, they pay for it, two units 24/7. Grand Terrace, we currently have here in Grand Terrace, one unit 24/7 and one 40-hour cover unit. And that 20, that 40-hour cover unit runs from 3:00 PM till 11:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So you have one unit that's 24/7, and then during those, that timeframe, you have two. And that is only Monday through Friday. Grand Terrace, 2000, pre-2010, we have one unit 24/7... Grand Terrace, pre-2010, we had one unit 24/7, two forty-hour cover units that were deployed just like Loma Linda during the high volume of calls, one forty-hour traffic unit, and then we also had a sheriff service specialist supporting those folks as well. So you can see, and after 2010, a substantial drop in service for the city of Grand Terrace. So to kind of put that in perspective, this is a map of our area of responsibility. The blue that you see is the county areas that those three, or two or three, units cover 24/7. As you can see, it's quite large, and a lot of them are in very troubled areas, and they're very busy. Also, you have San Manuel, let's see if I get this point right, San Manuel Casino, where you'll have two units 24/7 right there, and then you'll also have one in the hospital in Loma Linda, and then you'll have, there's Loma Linda there, you'll have two to four, depending on the time of day, and then, of course, Grand Terrace, which, again, I'll say, it's one unit 24/7, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. One unit 24/7, and then one cover unit, which works from eleven, or I'm sorry, 3:00 PM till 11:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So to go over a couple of scenarios here. Grand Terrace, Saturday afternoon, say, 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, there is one unit in Grand Terrace. They go to a call and subsequently have to take somebody to jail. They go to jail, and that's a two-hour trip at least, whether they go to Central Jail in downtown San Bernardino. Sometimes, these guys are gals. They won't, they won't clear the jail because the in custody, the person in custody needs a hospital check. This can take them out of commission for three hours and even longer. Well, during that time, on that, on that Saturday, there is no unit coverage within the city limits of Grand Terrace. However, don't let that frighten you too bad, we've been doing it this way for many years. There are plenty of people out. Sticky is to happen, an in-progress call, one of those folks are gonna come and work that call. However, it could be ten, fifteen, twenty-minute drive, depending on traffic. And so that, that kind of shows the concern that we have of providing you, the citizens of Grand Terrace, with a level of service that I was talking about earlier. But let's talk about the level of safety. Deputy in Grand Terrace does a traffic stop that leads to a pursuit, a foot chase, a use of force, a fight, a shooting. He has to wait that ten, fifteen minutes for somebody to respond. So again, that is a troubling concern of ours as well, but again, nothing that we're not used to. We've been doing this for a long time, but if there's a way that we can improve the safety for our folks, of course, we're gonna be all. Come up with this presentation, I sat there at my computer, and I went one week back from the days. So this isn't, this is just a week that I just grasped, and consider, it's winter, things are a little bit slower, so these numbers can change dramatically in the summertime when it's, when it's busier. But during this one week, a seven-day period, Grand Terrace had 264 calls or proactive contacts during that week's time. Thirty-one of those calls were assisted by either a Loma Linda or a county deputy. That means either the deputy in Grand Terrace called for help, or the other person on the other side of the radio was listening, heard an inflection in the deputy's voice, or the call dictated that two deputies would probably. So their, their, their call sign is in the call history. So there was thirty-one out of the 264 where two deputies were needed. Nine of them were handled, you know, within the city limits, were handled by either a Grand Terrace, or I'm sorry, a Loma Linda or a county unit. What this means is either that deputy was tied up on a priority call and could not break, or he was stuck at the hospital, or in the county jail, and so county or Loma Linda deputy responded, handled the call, took the paper, and, and left. So the level of service, the Grand Terrace residents probably didn't even know that it wasn't a Grand Terrace deputy. But this is the way we take care of each other, and again, we've been doing this for years. So let's talk about the historical staffing levels for Grand Terrace. Okay, I know it's kind of hard to see those numbers, I can't even see them from here, but I believe there is eight in the first three columns. That's till two, from 2005 to 2007, there were eight people assigned to Grand Terrace. And I'll, I'll discuss those numbers in a couple of slides ahead here. And then it increased from 2008 to 2010, increased to nine. And then there was some budget issues in 2010, and they dropped two positions, and then in 2013, it looks like they dropped another position to our current staffing level of six, and we've been running this way for the last four years. So this is those exact same numbers. So of course, the top date range on the top, and then on the side, you have deputies, Deputy Forty, and then traffic, and then the SSS. So the deputy, and you see the asterisks there, it takes five deputy sheriffs to fill a twenty-four-hour shift for that, for a seven-day period. With one, that extra deputy, the five, because there's four shifts in, in that week's time period, that fifth deputy is a vacation cover relief. That's just the way that the Bureau of Administration does it. So let's go 2005 to 2007. That's when we had eight deputies. We had five, which covered the twenty-four-hour unit. We had the two forty-hour units, and then the one SSS. 2008 to 2010, we increased a traffic car, which again, was a forty-hour traffic car. And then 2011 to 2012 is when we saw a budget hit, and we lost the traffic car and the SSS. In 2013 to 2016, additional budget cuts hit, and we lost the one forty-hour traffic car, bringing us to our number of six. So let's talk about crime stats and the way that it affects this. This is, can't see the top there, but it's, these are part-one crimes. These are the heavy crimes, the felonies, robberies, I can't see what else is up there, but assaults, and then the property. Then you got the property crimes, which is burglary, larceny, auto theft, and arson. All of these are the heavy crimes, and you can see that the numbers pretty much maintain the same, but it does show a slight increase till 2016. Part-two crimes, this is something that the, that our county or all law enforcement across the country has, has seen, is the decrease in crime stats in the part. Qualia life issues, and a lot of it is captured by proactivity, law enforcement out there doing the job. But these are some of the reasons, and I actually. Points, because they have to address all of the city managers. So when that comes out, I'll be sharing that with our city manager. But this is what they did give me, and it was no shock to me, it's something we've been all watching throughout the years. The state reclassification of certain crimes, what they've done is some. Doos, penalty of the crime. Much, and made it a misdemeanor. So they've, they've reclassified a bunch of crimes like that, as well as the state decriminalization of certain crimes, such as marijuana possession, marijuana cultivation, marijuana usage, and there are several others. The state passing of Prop 47, which reduces the penalties or sentencing, and then, of course, the state mandated early release program. And as I said earlier, less deputies out in the field means lower proactivity numbers. And if we were to staff more deputy sheriffs in any place, whether it's Loma Linda, Grand Terrace, Redlands, Colton, the more deputies or the more cops that are out there, the higher part-two crime stats are gonna be. It's because it's the activity. So this is the part-two crimes from 2005. I couldn't find the stats to 2005, it wasn't zero, I just couldn't find it. So it starts 2006, and you can see the huge decrease in part-two crimes. And again, those are all of the other offenses that weren't part-one, and there are weapons violation, vandalism, stolen property, resisting arrest, eluding police, reckless driving, and so forth. But let's look at the calls for service for Grand Terrace. They pretty much maintain the same, so it's not like, since there's, people aren't reporting those part-two crimes, they're not calling the police. Obviously, with the numbers that are shown here, they are still calling the police.
What did we do in 2013?
2013, I tried to research that, and I could not come up with an explanation. Stating is a, is an animal all, on its own, and it could be a number of things. Now, this here is the number of citizens per deputy. Lot of departments kind of manage their amount of officers they have on their department per the amount of citizens they have in the city. There is no set standard. As much as 2,000 residents per officer, all the way down to 500 residents per officer. So it's, it's kind of a mixed bag. So the average there is on the left, I don't have my glasses, but the average there is on the left, and it's eighteen-hundred and something for the average. And our goal is to have our numbers either be close to that or below it. And as you can see, we are at about 2,300 citizens per deputy. However, if we were to add one, it would drop substantially, and it would be about, what is that? I can't see it. There you go. So you can see that adding one deputy gets us down to where it's, it's more in line with the average. And that average that we're talking about is, the Sheriff's Department has fourteen contract cities, and that's the, that's Rancho, Victorville, Hesperia, all of needles. From the average of those, that's how we came up with that average number. And this here is the calls. Is the average, calls for service per deputy, and we got fifteen-hundred and some change there on the left, that's the average, and we have nineteen-hundred and some change in the center, which is our current, that's with our current situation with the six deputies. If we add one deputy, it brings it down to eighteen-hundred? Thank you.
Eighteen ninety-five.
So as you can see, adding that one deputy brings us down to an average that's acceptable. Or not, I shouldn't say acceptable, more towards the average. So recommendations for increasing patrol staffing. Our current staffing and costs for one twenty-four-hour patrol unit and one forty-hour patrol unit is 1.7 million. Now, that is for all of the support that goes along with that, it's not just for those six deputies. When we have something that, you see the helicopter flying around and assisting, that's no charge to the. Bond at no cost. It's dispatch center, it's all included, so it's more than just the deputy sheriffs, of course. But it's one. In a perfect world, if money was no object, and safety and the citizens getting the best service possible, two deputies 24/7 would be the best case scenario, but of course, that is just under a million-dollar price tag over what we're paying now, and that might be something that we could be a long-range goal. Option two, though, is, is much more affordable, and it would help tremendously, but it's not the answer to everything. That's that, our continue, our one twenty-four-seven, and adding a second forty-hour patrol unit, which is an added cost of just over $300,000. This is what the schedule looks like, so people, so you understand what I mean by forty-hour deputy, and, and the top scale is where we're at right now. You have the, the cover deputy that works from 3:00 to 11:00. He's not working Saturday, he's not working Sunday, he works eight hours, Monday through Friday, from 3:00 to 11:00. So where you see it blank there, that means there's no coverage. The guy below him, the 24/7, is that 24-hour patrol unit. Now, if we add the one, we go down to the next one at the bottom, you add the additional forty-hour patrol unit, you change the eight-hour shift up top that you see to a twelve-hour shift, then we'll be able to run a twelve-hour unit, and again, we can adjust the time anywhere, but I just put it from 3:00 AM to, or 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM, Saturday, or seven days a week. The only thing that it would be on Tuesday would be their, would be their short day. So Tuesday, they would work an eight-hour day, but all other days, which are the busiest, would be twelve hours worth of cover. And then, of course, you'd still have that 24/7 patrol. So my recommendations. Grand Terrace, consider adding the one additional deputy 24-hour unit. This would provide Grand Terrace with two units 24/7 every day. But again, that comes with a big price tag, and again, that could be a long-term goal. I know that the city has, has got some exciting things that are happening, and, and that could be reachable someday in the near future. Or adding that forty-hour patrol deputy, which would enable the city to field the second unit during the time where activity is at its highest, seven days a week. Doing either one will create a safe work, safer work environment for our deputies, and will increase the staffing level to provide more coverage during peak times, increasing the level of service to the citizens of Grand Terrace. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. Do my colleagues have any? Councilmember Reinhards.
Thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Is it possible to change the cover deputy hours or days the way it is right now, or is that set?
No, absolutely. As long as, as long as we don't do anything. Gotta be five, it could either be 312, 410, or 5.
A 3:00 to 11:00, was that crime stats?
Crime stats and. Traffic.
So they tend to be more busy in the afternoon than, say, 3:00 in the morning, obviously?
Not just in Grand Terrace, but everywhere else. It's just right now, it seems to be.
From one place to another, we're probably giving up something as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Only thing is, like, the part-two crimes. My take is, you know, that they actually lowered what the crimes are instead. And, you know, knowing too, like. And, you know, knowing too, like, nothing worse when you walk into -- The need for, you know, to have somebody -- And it counts. And also, you know, to be here for our citizens. The crime is no longer a -- You know, be put in and get a record, but now it's just a ticket. But I want to thank you for your presentation on here. And so I like how that really explains a lot. And I like what Mr. O'Neal said.
Mayor Proton?
This was an outstanding report. So I really don't have any questions, because you explained everything. And so this seems -- The offenses such as weapons viol -- It seems like what this is saying is -- Until we catch them, what it is?
And if I can add to that, one of the things of working by yourself, literally, you're by yourself, you're cautious for what you get yourself involved in. But when you know you have a partner that's seconds away, or you're working together, like those two county guys -- Take care of business, and they make sure that they get out of there safely. The Grand Terrace guy, he does all of that. Now, granted, it's not as violent of a place, but you never know what you're stepping into, and he does it by himself most of the time. So.
All right. Any other questions at this time?
Just a quick comment to add to the --
To add to the comment on the reduction of the Part II crimes, I -- But what it actually is, I think -- Whatever it is. So we've noticed that as well. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to open up to the public. I do have two requests to speak. And Johann Gallo and Anthony Cortez. So did you want to both come up at the same time?
Hello, City Council. I'm Anthony Cortez. This is Johann. I started a community watch here in Grand Terrace. It was -- first, it was going to be a neighborhood watch, but instead of just doing a little neighborhood, I wanted to incorporate the whole city. So what I went ahead and did is I'm going to have -- we have a chain-of-command sort of thing. What we're going to do is we're going to assist the, you know, sheriffs, and we're going to be helping them with the being the eyes and ears of Grand Terrace. And it's not going to -- we're not going to be running around on muck and being vigilantes and stuff like that. So we're going to be pretty organized in assisting them as much as possible, mostly being the eyes and ears. If we see something, we want everybody to know to, you know, calm out. We do have a Facebook page that we put things on. One of our goals is to be informational for the community, letting them know why it has taken so long for sheriffs to come. And basically, what he just did today was amazing. So everybody can see that. So we do have a Facebook page. We are at 432 members, and we are actually -- the citizens are using it when they -- And it's helping out a lot. We've -- with that, we've probably assisted the sheriff with catching, I believe, three people that I know of right now. Also, if no one wants to join the community watch, we're also asking for volunteers to join the citizen patrol, and they're pushing that a lot. So if we can get, you know, citizens to join that, we can probably have our vehicle, citizen patrol vehicle, driving around a lot more, too, to -- Also, and the people that don't have social media and don't have Facebook or a computer, Blue Mountain Outlook's starting again here in March, and we're going to be posting or putting stuff in the Blue Mountain Outlook for people to see. That's it. You have anything?
Good evening. I appreciate the time that the mayor -- Appreciate the time that Lieutenant Wolf has presented his information today, working with Anthony as well as Brian on the Citizens Watch program and trying to revitalize the community watch program. You know, there's nothing more important than information, and I think the more critical thing for us within our city is to get information out quickly to the citizens on what's going on. Part of that, we recommend -- Nothing gets your attention more than somebody banging on your door at 10:00 in the morning or 10:01 in the morning, trying to see if anybody's home. We see that happening more and more. I give it to law enforcement, because we didn't do them any favors with the passages of the props or early release program, any of the other things that are putting bad guys back on the street quickly, which is why I strongly encourage the city council look at the budget and look at what we can do to look at possibly option two as an interim step. The city's not -- For the city. I'm willing to work at least what's going on and take a proactive approach instead of a reactive approach. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anybody else who'd like to --
My name is Stephanie Holt. I've lived in Grand Terrace just under two years. It's my first council meeting, so it's been very -- I -- this may have already been indirectly answered, but I was curious with the -- in that one week that you looked at, and I don't know who's appropriate to answer this or not, but the 30 -- Or is that included in that million-plus price tag?
That would be included.
It's included?
No, that's all included.
Okay, good. So I guess my question, I mean, this could go on and on with questions, but I am a member of the Grand Terrace Community Watch. So I don't -- as wonderful as this is, and as appreciated as it is, and as much as I want to be involved, I don't want this city to just be comfortable with citizens doing all the work. I mean, that's not enough. We don't have authority, we don't have the education, the training. It's great that people want to be eyes and ears, especially during work hours and whatnot, but we can't be reliant on that. And the basic, basic, adding a 40-hour employee, I mean, whatever -- The city manager, I'm sorry for all these finance things, could be put towards something very important like this. So I would really like to see things like that happen here. I do love it here, and I'm invested in the city, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holt.
Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Lieutenant. One thing I noticed on your slide presentation is you couldn't read it. And guess what? I couldn't read it either. I just got new glasses.
And for the record, this is Mr. Leo Doyle.
Oh, yes. I forgot to give you my name. Don't remember it, though. So anyways, what I saw there, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that Loma Linda looked like they had five cars there. Grand Terrace has one. So my obvious suggestion would be, why can't we take one from Loma Linda? And when Loma Linda's having a problem where they need five, they can go move her from Grand Terrace.
I think that they actually pay for that one, though. They might have something to say about that. Loma Linda would.
Oh, they pay for their own police? Oh, so we're not? So we've got lots of finance people. But I don't think we're getting adequate -- Think I bet you I'd get 90% of the people here to agree with me. It's just not happening here. And I'll give you an example. We live up in Honey Hills, and we love it up there. But people are fornicating up there. They're urinating, they're defecating, they're leaving panties and condoms all over the place. And I had one sheriff come up, deputy, I mean, and he says, "What do you want me to do about it?" Now, all the rest of them seem to be very cooperative with that, and they had a -- They should be doing a lot about it. They should be patrolling up there more. And this is on a weekly basis. This isn't something I'm picking out all these random things that are happening. So it's very upsetting, and it's getting worse and worse. The crime thing, the stats that you gave us, it's a joke. Not you, but it's a joke. Crime is up. Crime isn't down. And crime in our neighborhood up there, the home evasions, you know? One was entered by four guys that were -- We're not even finding out who's getting it, but their turn is coming. It's going to happen to other people. So what does the sheriff tell us to do? The deputy tells us to get a dog, get an alarm system, get a gun. What do we do? We moved to Grand Terrace because it was a safe, low-crime community, but I don't feel that way anymore. And so I don't know what we have to do. Of an added tax or whatever it takes to get more protection here. And it's -- everybody else is so passive about it, even in our neighborhood. Some people just don't care, because they haven't been hit yet. But if somebody comes into their house and walks through -- Then all of a sudden, he's going to go, "What are we going to do about it?" And so we have that kind of -- What's happening? We just happen to be at the hotspot. Other people that should be here have given up. So they are taking protection into their own hands. Then you know what always happens, all these stories I always hear, is that you shot somebody, and the guy's protecting his own -- Happens a lot. Do you agree? It happens. Yeah, it does. Happens a lot. The other thing we'd like to know is exactly what is going on. I'd like to know what -- What they're doing up here. I don't know who's doing it. It's got to be a political thing. But for them to redefine what's a crime anymore is ridiculous. We're not stupid, you know? Now, I know, I come from a family of law enforcement, back east, not here, and they feel a lot better because they got a -- But you're going to come to my house because I'm not 30 anymore and run them down. So that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Is there someone else that would like to speak at this time? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name's Abigail Smith. I was just wondering, Lieutenant, if you could clarify something for me, because on the wall in there, in the office, it says that there's a sheriff here, Lieutenant, and then there's six or seven deputies. So I was wondering, thinking that sheriff in there is not the sheriff of San Bernardino County, and I was thinking that you were actually contracted out of San Bernardino County. Could you please clarify that for me?
Yeah, the picture -- The six deputies are -- Were the staff for the city of Grand Terrace.
Please, we want to make sure this is on the record.
Okay, so I was wondering, the --
Maybe this would be something that staff could follow up with. If -- ma'am? And explain to you our contract with the sheriff? Okay. So if you could give your information to Ms. Fortune down here? Thank you.
Practically keep you from doing any -- Concealed carry. There was a potential -- Again, it goes back to -- Are that may be coming, and, you know, you can get hit. They've had burglaries forever, and you -- You can't call -- That makes you the first responder. The sheriff is the second. So it's up to the people to be prepared and to be aware of what's going on. But it needs somebody to be there that can able -- that is able to enforce the law. And the city manager has a -- Enforcing some of these things, fortunately or unfortunately, but, you know, he's a firm civilian. About who you're voting for, about the laws and things that they want to prevent people from being able to take care of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suter. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time? Please come forward.
My... My home is one of those that was robbed at 1:30 in the morning by the guys looking for Jim. And what I'm... We have one deputy in town. And I would like to say, the deputy that came to our house was terrific. He was very professional. He had the situation under control. But there wasn't anybody on my street, in my area, patrolling. I realize Grand... A small town. One deputy can't be everywhere. But I think we need more people and we need it at night. I appreciate what Anthony and Johann are doing very, very much. Here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bubier. Anyone else who'd like to speak? All right. Seeing no takers, I'm gonna close public comment and come back to my colleagues. This is a receive and file, so if there are any last comments that you'd like to make, I imagine we will have this come back to us with our budget for the next fiscal year. Any further comments? Mayor Protem?
I think one of the things... Historically, how we've been functioning... Just woefully inadequate. At the very least, I think we need to find a way to fund an additional 40 hours. I think it's not a good practice where we... The other dilemma that we have, and I don't want... A hundred and some thousand and half... That we need to start looking at... Because what we're doing, trying to do is do economic development so we can fund more protection. But we're in the dilemma that we need protection now. So, we need to really have you come back with us on some strong considerations of what we can do, at least at a minimum level. Because I think this is something... Even though crime statistics go up, down, or what have you, I think it's clear to me, at least, we just don't even have the minimum that we need. And in my education and training as a public administrator is... And I think... So, but I think everything's scaled. If you have a small budget, 75% is not that much. And the other thing about... Budget going to salaries. So, it's obvious that we're gonna have to look at our overhead. And we're just not gonna all get exactly what we want or need still. We're just not there yet. But I'd like to see staff come back with some kind of ideas how to at least get that 300 grand looked at for our budget deliberations. Thank you.
Councilmember Hesse?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, thank you, everybody. Find the 300,000 we need to have. Where are the workshops, Mr. Duffy? This is, you know, your expertise. You need to take care of our residents. Quality of life and here in Grand Terrace. And it's also a small price to pay to make sure our deputies are safe on the streets. I mean, we just had in Whittier, we had an officer killed by just doing a traffic stop. And that was from one of the early release... So, there's no price tag on safety. There's no price tag on quality of life. We need to take care of it. We need to push this issue. And if you can... I know, you know, the... I went up there myself and Rodney Spencer, we went to Palm Street up there and we caught some kids up there. If we could get the extra patrol up there, because one other thing, you know, yeah, they're throwing trash, they're doing everything. They're not supposed to be up there if we could just, you know... And there's no excuse. It's a ticket automatic, you know? No slap on the hand, nothing. Just, you know, they don't need to be up there at that time of the night if we could take care of that, you know, for us. I think we need to move forward and find us 300,000 and protect our city, protect our residents, and increase the quality of life in our Citizen Patrol. Thank you, guys, for, you know, everything you do for us, you know, stepping up to the plate and helping our sheriffs be our eyes and ears and helping our residents. I really appreciate that and you guys doing that for us. I'm on your Facebook. It's a good tool for information. That's the one good thing about it, you know, to get the word out. And residents, you know, they look out for each other. You know, any bit of information helps, you know? It helps the officers, it helps the Citizen Patrol. But we're out here to take care of each other. So, we can get this, you know, find 300,000 and do this for not only this year, but, you know, like the lieutenant said, baby steps. If we can start with at least this Option Two, then as our city grows, be proactive instead of reactive, because we're gonna get businesses and we're gonna get new development. And we have to have the sheriff coverage to cover that additional cause that's gonna happen because of that. So, that's all I have there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Councilmember in ours?
I waited. Again, I want to thank Lieutenant... And Kevin and people who have been in the meetings with us to try to get some life pumped into the Community Patrol. Because even if we have another deputy, it's... But it certainly helps if we have a couple hundred people with their eyes open and their phones ready and the Facebook alert's on. So, I want to thank those guys and its residents that are gonna...
I would like my thank you to Mr. Gallo and Mr. Cortez for the work that you're doing. And thank you to those of you that came out and expressed your concerns. And thank you to those that have expressed your concerns in emails and phone calls as well. We do need to find, I think, multiple ways of dealing with this. To Mr. Suter's point, we are the first level of defense for our own homes. We do need to know that we have and count on law enforcement to be there when we do call them. But we also, as residents, need to look out for each other. And so, I think it's a multi-pronged approach. And I think, Mr. City Manager, do you have any questions about the direction that you're looking at for the upcoming budget?
Currently, the city has about $140,000 that the council set aside in 2014, '15. What... We'll be able to come back to the council at the budget cycle and give you the data. You do something, you can sustain it. So, certainly... And we'll move forward to do that. And we'll report back during the budget cycle in terms of what that data looks like.
Anything more on this item? Mr. City Attorney, do you want us to vote on a receive and file for this?
It's not necessary, but you can.
All right. Nobody is wanting to do that, so we will not. We will just receive and file and... Communications.
Yes, Mayor. Is that in the next month, there's going to be the city-county retreat or update. And at the city-county retreat update, they ask the cities to provide a poster board for each city and specific... Cities Midas Program, identifying that it goes promote three and four economic development impact successful partnerships. And so, this basically lines the city's half a billion-dollar investment over the next 20 years. And we're showcasing the point is that we are the center of the urban empire and we have a quality of life that is really second to none and that we're tucked right between the two metropolitan areas of San Bernardino and Riverside. So, this poster board will be up along with all the other counties' poster boards, cities' poster boards at the city-county meeting that's gonna be occurring soon. So...
All right.
That's it.
Having said that, it is time... ...in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding this meeting. Again, thank you all for being here. Thank you to my colleagues for your discussion. We are adjourned.